Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I need your approval of minutes of the meeting for June 6th.
I got a problem with that one. When I seconded the motion to give retirement for that, I said that I will not vote for pay raise in 24 and it wasn't in the minutes.
Because it was just the second to the motion. The motion was my motion.
Yeah, the motion was her motion, your second. Yours wasn't the original motion.
Well, that's the way it's gonna be. I ain't voting for no pay raise in 24. Say what you want.
And that's fine, that's your opinion.
That has nothing to do with the motion.
Then I wanted to second it.
David.
I think I told you I agreed with you as far as no motion. I mean, no raise either, I think I told you.
Danita made a motion.
Okay, so what's the deal?
Danita made a, Danita made a motion, excuse me.
She was talking to me.
Danita made a motion to approve the retirement for the employees. Rex seconded it and said, but I will not approve a raise for 2024. And that did not get put in the minutes, but that was not the original motion. Am I correct? Or should he have amended the motion to state that?
I just said I had one second. Did her motion include a raise?
No.
No.
Okay.
All we were voting on was the...
Well, really Rex, you're just making a comment attached to the second, which is fine. Do you wanna be on record that you're not, I mean, that can be added?
I mean, it was just, cuz I ain't getting 6% this year and then I wanna make sure that people know that I won't be for a pay raise.
Okay.
And I just thought it'd be nice to be in records.
Yeah, well, normally the...
And I can see your point, but...
The minutes aren't like a court transcript. They're, they're, they're official.
It'll be on, it's on film again today.
Yeah, I, I mean, if you wanna...
I just wanna point that out.
If you wanna add a comment to the minutes, you can request it be added.
You amend it, put it on?
Whatever. I just wanted to know.
So are you gonna second the minutes?
No, do you wanna amend it? Oh yeah, that's right.
You wanna second them or amend them? All in favor?
Aye.
You guys are up.
Leader plat.
I thought we was gonna do 12.
Oh.
We got my high water boots on in case it rains.
We can only hope.
Yeah.
I couldn't find them.
Anyway.
I just knew it had to be important, you knew.
They said we had to.
Yeah. Yeah, we didn't have a choice.
Okay, make it famous.
Why are we here?
Lee, you wanna go ahead and do this part of it? You guys are here cuz you wanted to put a plat here, right?
Yep.
And so you guys, here is, here's some copies if you wanna see it. He brought these copies, so if you'd hand them back. And so, if you guys wanna look at that, it is a $60 fee that goes with it. And then mainly it's for signatures. And what I'll do is after we do the signatures, then I'll write the rest of it in after that. If you guys are comfortable with letting it dry and then I'll, I'll fill the rest out when it dry. And then after I sign it, I'll go ahead and make more copies like this and give you this copied one. Yeah, maybe wait until tomorrow so I can let it dry for, for really good. Okay, so I, so there's quite a few signatures and then like I said, I'll fill this part in. But you guys here and then Lee here and then you here, Dawn's here, Treasurer here, Director of Equalization and then I'm up there, so.
Basically, I think what we did last year or the last time, just review the plat and if there's no opposition or anything like that, then make a motion to approve a second and then we sign off and file.
Okay.
So you're bringing this to us to do the plat? You're okay with it?
Yep.
So we'll all move to this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get it signed and...
We're getting by. Trying to do some of the things we used to do.
Yes, we did. Danita, Rex, all in favor?
So those are the only two we signed?
I guess. Maybe we have to sign this. We have to sign these too.
I don't think so. I think those are just copies.
We gotta sign the copies.
We have to sign these?
Oh, yes.
I guess, yes.
Then I better sign them.
Yep.
We can sign them then.
Just one copy, how many more copies?
Uh, I think there should be...
Well, we'll just sign them all.
Sign them all.
You want, you want us to date these down then?
Yeah, to date the dates.
Okay, seven, six, five.
You want us to use that pen or can we use another pen?
She said that pen.
Should they say black or blue?
Yeah.
Sometimes it naps.
Just keep using the same pen and then they're all right or they're all wrong.
You have to be careful.
That's why I was trying to do one pen, but...
Yeah.
Yeah. Are they using the right one? Cuz if they're not, it's back on the stage.
Right, it's, they told me to do this blue one and use that specific pen.
That's why I asked.
Nobody's gonna, um, charge you.
Thanks for all you guys do and also very stressful.
The ending job?
Yeah. I think we're done.
Okay.
Thank you guys.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, you guys have a good day.
See you later. Bye.
Bye.
Okay. And then there's this for the jewels.
Well, we'll just talk about it tonight.
We're gonna give it to you, yeah.
Take care of them. Thanks, guys.
I suppose we can move this part over. We can move on to the meeting.
I was gonna say.
It's so quiet in here now.
I don't have to sign this.
Yeah, let's just, we'll head into that. Yeah, you have to sign it. Alright.
Okay, let's move on. Let's move down to number 12. Quick plate, please.
Okay. 12 says cell phones. I'd like to move that recording be limited to the official county video recording and that the official recording be made available on YouTube or Facebook.
There's South Dakota laws pertaining to recording and I don't think the commission can overrule a South Dakota law.
Barbara?
Can the commission overrule a South Dakota law pertaining to recording? Is there a law that authorizes recording? Did you bring it?
Yeah, there is.
Which is it?
12511.
Okay. Thank you. What the law says is it can be recorded as long as it's reasonable, obvious and not disruptive.
And yeah, if somebody gets crazy with it, you can say, yeah.
Or you'll have to allow it under those conditions.
So, but if somebody sits out there with it in our faces?
When, when you make the rule, when you're in the situation and it becomes disruptive, you can stop it.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Public comment?
There weren't any.
Okay, we'll move on. Highway superintendent, Tanner.
There's a fuel bed right there, Dawn.
Oh.
Fuel bed is, ethanol 307, 12 diet, 294, all water.
We had a motion to accept.
Accept.
Highway updates. Aye.
Yeah, been spraying, got that first pass pretty well done. Mowing hopefully is done today, close. Bladed, also gravel, measured some stockpiles, worked on a bridge, mixed some plain gravel. Pretty much a month.
Okay, um, I talked with Tanner this morning and Josh. With IMAG, we have found out that the federal funding on these bridges, especially the two of them that we are looking at redoing, if we qualify for the federal funding, and we'll know a lot more next Tuesday, there's a meeting, that, um, the feds have allowed $50 million. And because of where these roads are located, we qualify if we get approved, there's a lot of ifs, for 100% through the federal funding. Josh and I will be on the meeting next Tuesday, Danita possibly. Tanner will be on the 18th. We've got an invite to be on these meetings and find out more. And he will meet with us after those meetings and let us know what he finds. He will fill out the applications, which are due August 1st. So that's what I have on the bridges.
I think I got August 9th, I got my certification class, I want to be all period certified.
Okay, I'm good.
So they pay 100%?
They pay 100%. If we get it.
Good.
So, I'm surprised you haven't made a phone call and found out.
Do you need authorization to attend your training? Where is, where is it?
Here.
Here. Oh, I moved that week.
Okay.
Allow him to go training August 9th, right?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Lee.
I think you're up, Lee.
Lee, your updates?
Uh, weed and pest, as Tanner said, we're at most all of the shoulders sprayed. Uh, that's gone pretty good. Couple hiccups with the truck, but I think we made through it and... And so, we've made passes, uh, got most all of them done. Um, I do have also the weed and pest grant, uh, that was emailed this week, uh, grant reimbursement form. And as a reminder, all receipts dated after the start date of the grant, which in our case is July 1st. So any invoices that we get that dated after July 1st, we can use grant money for that and UTRAM is aware of that, so. So, got all that on file and we'll be ready to turn that in. The DOE, let's see, the basic course, uh, DOE training is coming up. I've got a voucher for that. And that will be in here. And I'll turn that, there it is right here. That's $350 and it is in September, I believe. So, and then the hotel room will be a little extra on that, but we won't do any of that till we get closer to time.
Do you need to send that in and, um, get approval or beforehand? Does it need to go in?
Yeah, the, the registration should be in as soon as possible, so.
September what, when's your meeting?
Um, it's gotta be, oh, it's gotta be August, August 1st is the, for the room reservation. I've already done that, but haven't paid anything. Let's see. Oh, October 2nd, 306, sorry. So, it heard, we'll get that going.
We'll move, they can attend assessment school.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, a couple of just housekeeping items, uh, one thing, last time I had said that I would, uh, check into the computer, whether we can purchase or if we can lease. Connecting points does not lease unless it's a bigger, you know, like a company-wide thing where there's multiple computers involved, so. Um, they're sending us a quote for, to upgrade the auditor's computer, I think it's been four years, so.
Well, and it's...
We can't, can't use it right now.
Can't use it right now.
Horrible.
It's making sounds. It's, it's... We could check with Davidson County and find out who they use. Cuz they, they get, um, computers.
And then, uh, on the leak courthouse, the...
Yep, um, we did get a quote. Carl, uh, with Awin Roofing was here yesterday, actually. And I've got a quote I'll just give you. Might be a little sticker shock, but... As I said, I would get a quote.
Is that for the whole roof or what?
Yeah, that's the whole thing. I don't know, so.
$44,000. Plus 2%. Um, 15-year warranty. Is that, then the 1,800 up above that then?
1,800?
Yeah, this is a warranty down here, 15-year factory pre-impessed inspected written warranty, 1,800.
That must be, I guess I didn't study it that close.
Okay.
I can call them and ask.
Yeah, no, that's fine. But we, when we initially talked, didn't they think it was about 60,000?
I don't remember that figure, but something like that, I put out on the business, maybe so. Uh, we remember Kyle was here. We fixed the corners, we're going into the downspots, we did that. And he cautioned the condition of the roof at that time and took pictures. Now, Carl, it's his dad, he did make a comment yesterday that if there, if he sees some spots, you know, that they can do to get us by, I mean, we don't have to do this.
Right.
You know, we don't have to decide today.
Right.
I just said I'd get a quote, so.
Right, right, no.
And so, he might be able to, if there's some problem spots, he might be able to find those. I did talk to him after he got done, so.
Okay.
I can talk with him a bit more and if he says, no, we can't patch anything, it's just time for a new roof, then we'll have to act accordingly.
Okay.
And if he can, then we can do that too and, you know, buy us some time, but...
Okay.
But we, I showed him the spots in my office and a couple others and he looked up, it's a steel roof, I mean, the underlayment. So, he said that's a good thing cuz it's easier to work with, so. I can call him and find out if he can do some patchwork or if he can act for a roof, so.
Okay.
Okay, um, fire extinguishers. I have Bob, uh, from Hyman Fire and Safety. I sent him a list of, uh, fire extinguishers we needed for the trucks and the equipment and the appropriate sizes. And he said he'll get them out to us, so we'll have everything we need for trucks and equipment.
Okay.
That should be on the way. And also, um, and I can put it on the overhead too. I've got, you know, there's been some question on, uh, property tax, cropland, non-cropland, the assessment, the values going up. And I was working with Amber Jensen, she sent a fact sheet. And I encourage anyone to take, take one of those and it explains that formula that we were talking about and how they come up with that. And I can go over yours afterwards, Ron, we can look at yours. Yep, what's that?
I hope so.
Yeah, and, and we can even call her if, too, she said she'd be there, um, this afternoon, so. That kinda explains the, how they come up with that. It's not anything that's done locally, it's all handled by those folks, so. Uh, she sent that and then there's also a county, well, there was a comparison. Buffalo County averages, uh, 2023 average cost, average dollar per acre 1,325 and 48 cents. And surrounding counties, Gerald was 1,754. Buffalo was under all the surrounding counties that they have listed here for 2023 as Gerald Brule hide in hand. So, not that it...
Right.
Just... All the counties in this state?
No, no, this is just an example that she had. It was helpful, but nevertheless, it go up, but... So, I have that. Um, I think that's it. That is it. I'll find out what Davidson uses for computers.
Same least there. I don't think they go with connecting.
Okay, thank you. Deb?
There were two hospitalizations, so, and those two, if you will not review those, I just need those back. And then there were four kinda health-related issues that I put together. Those are not on your voucher list that you have. So I wanted to make sure that those got approved before... Right, I just wanted to make sure that they had seen through there, so, but I did not, like I said, add those to the vouchers, so. That is that part. Um, then B, Auditor Treasurer, it is not done for this, this month, so. And last month, we, I put it out for, during the provisional budget, so we have that out there. Um, the provisional budget itself is online on our website, so if anybody wants to look at that, we'll have to add that meeting in a couple weeks to trim that from provisional.
Have you got the projected revenue done yet?
It's all in the, on the website.
It's on there.
Everything should be in there. Well, that part's, no, I mean, it's in what it's... It's, I have done what's done. I guess I'm not sure what you're asking.
You're supposed to have, it says this handout you sent, supposed to have actual estimated revenue columns.
Yep, that's in those columns. You'll see it in there.
The projected.
Yep.
It's in there.
Yep.
What I got printed out doesn't happen in there.
I'd have to look at how that actually says it then, so. I have only what I have printed out so far, so.
Cuz to do a budget, you're supposed to have what you think your revenue is gonna be next year.
I'd have to, we'd have to get together and try to come up with something, then I don't have an actual... A form to do that, I guess. I don't have a makeshift form.
You talking about the Excel spreadsheet?
Uh, no.
So...
You talking about, you got your revenue, you got your taxes.
What was done a couple years ago? Do you have an idea of what that looked like?
Well, look at Hennam County. He's done it. Everybody around us done it, so.
I'll have to look at it.
Need job. We could go over it right now, but it is not really my job, so.
No, I will look into that one, so. I've just been doing the provisional budget aspect of things, so I will look into that.
What's, we're going to the revenue part.
And so that's all I have in regards to my parts on those.
Signature at Queen Bank.
Danita asked for...
Yes, 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 um...
Where's your, where is the provisional budget meeting?
We haven't set it yet. No?
July 25th, I think is what we, at least. We hadn't set, set it up.
Yeah.
Pitch up though.
We're okay?
Yep.
Okay, the, the bank signature card, I know we only have two people on there. And we had, unfortunately, she was absent, no fault of her own, I'm not citing her for that, but I think we oughta have another one on there as a backup. I know one time we did get checks, only had one signature on it, but we did say we would have two. So I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the chairman of the board, that may be from here forward, be on the third signature on our signature card.
For writing checks?
Yep.
Write checks, she signs them.
She signs them.
Oh, understood.
I'm sorry, I've been nice and polite, but we had, we need two signatures. We need two signatures and...
Just for that, you were talking when...
Well, and there's chances stuff come up like that, okay? And I wanted to make sure that we had a backup signature. We've never had a backup. Thank you, Ritz.
No problem.
All in favor?
Aye.
Most secure. Treasurer, sorry.
We promised Janice a raise if she will attend training.
Was that not done in executive session?
It was promised to Janice a raise.
Was it done in executive session?
Can't be caught.
Well, as somebody that was in executive session and told Janice that, I told her it was gonna take more than one meeting for her to go to training. I asked her to go to training. I told her I would support a raise for her if she went to training. I'll tell you what, the, the ladies there, that's the first time they've seen Janice there, you know? She needs to go and more training and so do you.
What are you proposing?
Proposing, we promised her a raise, we give her a raise.
And that was in executive session, Rex. Is that, is that your motion? Is that your motion?
But you haven't given us an amount.
You just got done telling everybody they weren't gonna get a raise.
Do you want to make a motion that you give her to come?
I'm so thankful. Thank you for being here. I don't think he looks that big. And this one, why don't we take on this one?
I make a motion, we give Janice the treasurer $5,000 raise.
That's...
She's been here 27, not...
And went to training once.
She made no second for me. I want a second, $5,000. We look at something, you know, a little more reasonable at this point. You don't wanna give anybody else a raise. And these people are going to training all the time. I agree, she's been here, but...
Lot of opportunity.
You know, there's a lot of training and a lot of things that we all need to be doing. And, um, you know, I don't, in my opinion, I don't feel one training is worth $5,000. So, that's my opinion.
Per year?
Per year?
$5,000 increase for the year.
And all these other people that go to these trainings all the time, they get nothing.
Most of them only been here a year or two.
Yeah, and taking advantage of the opportunity of trying. How many times she go to training?
Do your job.
I didn't second your motion, you seconded this one.
I realize that.
No, not at $5,000. No, not at five thousand dollars, I don't.
All right. I'll have a second.
There are some questions on these, David.
I would like to pay them. But I, I just put them up there for you guys to look at them.
In the, okay.
Just so you make sure you put them all together.
Sorry, I should have looked at them, I...
Contracting courthouse positions to other counties.
Yeah, but Dave, he put it in a hit when he passed out some things, you know, comparing what other counties do, but, what was there, six of them? But two counties contracted their offices out.
They're unincorporated counties.
Todd County has more taxable acres than Buffalo County. What's the difference? If you're gonna get somebody to do your work for less, I'd say do it.
Hundred and thirty-six years of a, a county that's been incorporated.
The county's still here.
The county's incorporated, those counties are unincorporated.
Two hundred and seventy-one thousand we're paying for the... The O E, the registered...
And what do you think it's gonna cost to, you, and you have no, you don't think you've got any control over what's being done now? What makes you think we contracted out who's gonna control it?
Well, most counties, the people aren't coming and going at their will.
What people? Coming and going at their will.
You said any elected official in Buffalo County can come and go.
That's throughout the state. That's a state statute.
Or the director of equalization.
He's not a, he's not a state employee, he's our employee.
That's right.
Right, and he isn't under salary.
But it was okay when you wanted to hire somebody.
Or give yourself thirty dollars, you know, holy shit.
As long as it's your idea, and it doesn't matter, Rex, you offered it to her. You made that offer to her.
No, no, she brought her deal in to you.
Yeah, but you had talked to her.
She wasn't.
You had talked to her.
Well, yeah. I'm not supposed to talk to anybody, is that it? I'm supposed to come and just say, yes, sir, no, sir?
So, is there a motion in this thing somewhere?
And who's gonna take it? Have you done your footwork to find out what counties are gonna take us?
No, because I knew that you two would shut it down right away, so I'm just bringing and putting it out there.
Do you want to finish putting it out to the whole context that you made your remark to some people of why you want it to be out?
What, we going by some talk around the town, is that it?
Yeah. Of the things that you've said about some of the employees? And why you want it?
Let's get it out there, let's get it out there.
I'm not, I'm not that kind of a vicious person.
Let's see what you're hearing.
What did, what did you say, hold up to what you said?
I don't recall. I'm just saying, I'm more than one say that they don't feel that the county people should be able to come and go on their own time.
He wanted to get rid of a dumb bee, and he wanted to, uh... He knew it wouldn't fly, and that's not what he wanted.
Kind of sounds like you.
Kind of sounds like me, yeah.
So, but, and maybe it's, you know, whatever. Is there a, um, you know, are you putting out a, a motion, or, you know, are you gonna start going out and, you know?
I make a motion, we studied the, the, study the possibility.
Well, you bring something back next meeting, put it back on the agenda next meeting, be prepared next meeting. Be what?
Who's gonna take us, what's it gonna cost?
What are you trying to do?
Food discussion.
Okay, well, put it back on the agenda for next meeting, come prepared.
You're not on my bus, Demi.
I didn't say I was. I'm just telling you, you're wasting everybody's time here. Come prepared, come prepared.
All right, sorry, you're so booked up.
Well, there's other things than...
Well, let's get on with it, let's get on with it, so you can get on here.
Burn ban is currently in place until August of twenty-three. I did look at the drought maps, and I'm wondering if we shouldn't declare a drought ban, because Buffalo County is still a D-two. And if we go ahead and as commissioners, declare it a drought disaster, that opens it up for federal funding. And we need to be a D-two for three weeks solid. So, I will throw that out there, and I'm not, you know, I just checked two days ago on our drought monitors, and we are a D-two.
So, should we review it monthly then, or how do you, how often do you want to review? If we go with this ban, I think that should be on there until a certain time.
Yeah. You know, I, I, I don't know, I sure don't want to, you know, yeah, we're raining and stuff now, but we are still in a D-two drought. And, so...
What do you think, Dave, should we have a?
Yes.
Should we just make a suggestion, and this is just for food for thought, but it's, it's what they're doing in Brule County, and it actually works pretty well. Even though there is a burn ban in place, if they make an application with a, a burn application, that shows that they, you know, plowed around the area and have adequate water from, moisture, or water on site to assist with that, you can approve a burn.
Yeah.
And even if there's a burn ban in place.
Yeah.
That's, that's an option to consider.
Yeah. But I also feel that we do need to declare Buffalo County in drought disaster. So that if the funding comes, because a year ago it never got done, which I was unaware of till I did some checking. But that opens the door to help with some federal funding.
Has governor's office declared drought disaster?
I don't believe so, yeah.
Yes, I know she declared something, there were three counties.
Yeah, she declared some, some counties.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, we can't bypass.
No, but if each count, each, it's up to each, from my understanding, when I talked to them, it's up to each county, the commissioners, to declare it. It has to be a D-two for two or three weeks, and then it jumps up to a D-three. Which, when I look, Brule County was a D-three, but we were still D-two. So...
And, and I'm, I may be mistaken on this, because it's been a little while. I thought the procedure, and Dave, maybe you can help out with this, the procedure is...
Two sides cut, and the governor's declares. And plain the ends, I've got everything sized, I've used my... To get the thickness as close as I can. Not quite like passing it through a power plant.
It seemed to me that the process was the governor declared, then the counties declared, correct?
Yeah.
Well...
But, but you are allowed to ask the governor.
Yes, you're allowed to ask the governor, yeah.
Because when I talked to, um, how, I can't even think what it was, um, they said that the counties kind of need to declare it, then that also helps open up for the federal funding. But I don't, I don't understand all of it, so that's...
But I do think you have to request it to the governor, the governor doesn't, but you do.
Okay.
Hand County did something you said last month, right?
Yeah. I will try and get in touch with Arlen and see. That's another thing I ran into this weekend, is visiting with Don DeBoer out of Brule County. He wanted to know what really happened with Catherine Benton, and I told him our side. And, um, I said my question, and I really don't care to call her, but there is a, a generator on a trailer that says Brule, Buffalo, that is supposedly half of ours. And she has told, Don said he had asked her, and she said, no, it's all Brule County, so we may be out that. I don't, I don't know what's gonna happen, so...
Signature here, has, has the Brule County Commission talked at all about how to deal with that common property?
They haven't, I mean, I think it would be prudent probably for Buffalo County to request that they address that issue, and then, at least, they'd get the paperwork going to see who owns what.
Yeah.
But they didn't discuss that.
Yeah, no, Don asked her, what about it, because it said Brule and Buffalo on it. And she's told Don, don't worry about it, it's all Brule counties. And, I mean, I don't know, that's just what, what I seen Don over the fourth.
Does the burn ban expire in August, is that what you're saying?
It's suppo, it was supposed to when we put it on, we need to decide what we're going to do.
The reason I'm asking that is that, in our parts of the counties, August was it, August, September, and October, were not all going to at any time. He instituted a burn ban here, what, a month ago? And there was some basis for that. That all changed. We, I don't like going on that right now, but I don't understand that.
Well, it's because our meetings are only once a month, and when we did it at the point, but as, as Deech pointed out, Brule County still has their burn ban. But what they do is they, um, and I, several people came forward and said, okay, I want to burn this. I, I've dished around the field, I've got X amount of water on hand. Yeah, is what they're doing. So, um, you know, and then that's what we're, you know, trying to decide at this point, it goes... When, when we did it, it was so dry that we just put it on till August, and...
Should be a lot better to burn when everything's green, though, than...
Right.
In August, when it dries up again.
Right, and that, and that wasn't, it wasn't necessarily to expire in August, we were to revisit it in August and see, you know, do we...
Well, you put it on like in...
May or June, yeah, because it was so bad. So...
Things are gonna pile up pretty good if we wait till December or something, I mean, that's basically, like Ron said, it's generally dry in the fall. That's not the best time to do it.
No, I, that's what we're saying, is, is we can revisit it, if it's dry, we can keep the burn ban on and do it a month at a time. Or we can take it off now, it's, it doesn't have to be on there till then.
Well, I think, that's what I'm trying to say, I think, if you're gonna institute a burn ban, there have, there has to be some reasoning behind that, of take, putting it on, or taking it off. And I think you have latitude to take it off, also. Now, in the states, be careful when you get into the fall, I know what you're trying to get around is harvesting, and why at all? And our, up in there, we're just a subject of trucks coming down the highway every other time, and it hits.
And that's, when we put the burn ban on, we did it under the suggestion of the fire chief, because we were so dry.
Yeah, whatever.
I mean, that's why it got put on, because we were so dry.
I ain't gonna argue with the fire chief, I'm just telling them...
Yeah, no, and we understand that, and appreciate it, thank you. So...
We went through that last hole.
So, you know...
Would they take a motion, and you guys do it, would they have to take a motion to? Well, I mean, it sounds like it'd be common sense to how you guys have...
That, that's a burn plan, basically been a burn plan, and if it, if it beats them, there's a motion on it. There's another option, and it's one that I've always tried to push with commissioners, and it doesn't, some, some like it, some don't, but it's, basically, it's a perpetual burn plan, depending on fire danger index, which is prepared basically daily. And so your fire chief, and emergency management, and it's on a website, so, if the fire danger index falls into the high or extreme danger category, the burn ban's automatic, you know, and it's not, then it's kind of furniture on risk. And it can be done with a phone call.
Common sense, basically.
We've kind of adopted sort of that plan in, in Gerald County, but not totally, but they do have...
Gerald have, have a website, so people can look at the website and see, I know Hand County has that, where it has the little gate down there, yeah.
I don't think one in Gerald County has that on, they do have a website. But that's just another option, because the burn ban thing comes up every stinking year, and you gotta go through it every single time, when it's on, when it's off.
As soon as you handle that one, it rains two days later.
I'd say go with something like that, could you write it up somehow?
Sure.
It's why I don't have a public disposal. So, we have to take care of ourselves. All I'm saying is, be careful what you're doing here, because some of us don't have any choice.
Oh, yeah. It, it, you know, depends on where you live, and, but, so do we want to get rid of the burn ban, what do you, what are you guys thinking?
I'm saying, go, what Deech just stated.
You know, Dave's gonna write something up, present it at the next meeting.
Does Gerald County have one beach?
They have one, like I said, it's not quite exactly like that, but I'm trying to think who it, I, I, it wasn't my idea, it was plagiarized from another county, I have to remember which one it was, if you did it just like that.
If you remember what you called me?
I will.
Thank you.
I'll put a call up to the auditors, too, around here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, leave it as is until the next meeting?
Yeah. Upcoming trainings.
I think we pretty much discussed that, Tanner and Lee.
Okay.
There was one on number twelve cell phones, Ben is...
We already did that.
Oh.
Yeah.
That was what he was talking about.
You can't do it.
Ben's not gonna get the cell phone?
Oh, Ben, Ben, okay, I, I had no idea what you were talking about.
Oh, so, number twelve cell phones, Ben, we gave the other two highway guys forty dollars, and the other one had ten dollars, so...
Okay, okay.
Can Ben have reimbursed, some reimbursement for his?
So, on those cell phones, are they capable of putting in like the leads and all that stuff, marketing or GPS?
Lee and maybe...
But are they gonna have them through that app?
I think Tanner already does.
All right, well, I mean, that's kind of like the whole purpose, I like it, so you don't have to rewrite those rules.
I've got the app, and I've got the free version of cell phone version, or whatever.
Okay, well, get one that's gonna last. I'll move.
For Ben to get forty dollars, is that the motion then? So, it'd be the same as Tanner, or?
The other fellow just gets ten?
Yeah, he only has a twenty-dollar cell bill.
He's got the twenty-dollar cell.
So, he gets half.
Marshall, Meade, and Stanley County have them.
A burn ban, okay. Trying to think, I know she declared something.
What if we do like a twenty-five dollar?
That's up to you guys, that's up to you guys. So, then he'd have a ten, twenty-five, and a forty?
Yeah. Because it's usually unlimited and stuff.
So, what you want, twenty-five?
I mean, that, that's a suggestion, so... But I, I believe, I mean, he's using his phone out there, too, that, you know...
We can do the G, G I S, and all that kind of stuff, because I think, well worth it. So, I'll go with the, did you say twenty, was it the same kind of plan as Tanner, or what?
I have no idea.
So, you just, would you just cut me in my check, or pay?
Well, yeah, I put it on his.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Twenty-five.
Yep.
Or whatever you guys decide, like I said, you, okay, one for forty, one for ten.
Yeah, like Tanner uses his a lot, not on ours, and...
I'd say ten, if Joe only gets ten, no matter what kind of phone he's got, then what the difference would be? Joe goes and buys a more expensive phone than me, paying him more.
It's not the phone, it's the app he charges, yeah.
Yeah, if he's getting this app and stuff on, I don't know if Joel's just got the capability to do that, his does it. Could get that app for the weeds and everything. Could get that app for the weeds and everything. Would you find out what kind of phone he has? Yeah. Table it till our next meeting.
Text for that. Uh, text.
We'll table it. Let's, let's go into executive session to review these vouchers. Did you give them those ones back? Yeah.
So personnel.
Yeah. I'll move. Go into executive session. Ten fifty, or one fifty, excuse me.